So it is now six forty-five P M and I am going to call this regular meeting. Excuse me, of the Board of Public Safety to order. For the record, today is Wednesday, August seventh, twenty twenty-four. Participating in person in City Hall Auditorium, I have Commissioner Young, Commissioner McElroy, Commissioner Benedetto, Commissioner Cogswell, and Commissioner McLeod. Sorry, these McElroy's and McLeod's are getting me. So that is our quorum before we get into the agenda. If we could please stand and pledge the flag. All right, before we get into the regular agenda items, Chief Borden, I think I will turn this over to you for pinning.
Mayor, can you please come? So as discussed at the June for safety meeting, Justin Massimew was approved to be our next deputy fire marshal. So tonight, we're going to recognize that and officially pin him into his position. So with that said, I'd like to have the mayor just have him read his oath.
Do you, Justin Massimew, recognize the badge of the deputy fire marshal as a symbol of public faith and trust, solemnly swear and affirm to perform your duty as a fire marshal for the city of Torrington for the best of your ability, to serve your department with respect and dignity, to serve the citizens of Torrington with compassion, courage, and integrity, and to support and uphold the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution and the State of Connecticut, and the Charter of the City of Torrington? So help me God.
And any other presentation or anything else this evening for the fire department? Okay.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members and chiefs. I'd like to thank the membership behind me for coming this evening. My name is Daniel Matthews. I've been a member of our organization for some time, serving now as a lieutenant underneath this current administration. I also happen to be the commander at the local Veterans of Foreign Wars post, as well as two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-four district commander, which covers the entire Litchfield County. Many people don't know a lot of the things that the veterans of foreign wars do. We provide scholarships for children, five of which went to local Torrington students that are here that received money for writing patriotic essays throughout the last couple of years. We've assisted with building ramps onto disabled veterans' houses. Recently, we had a two-time Purple Heart recipient from Vietnam who were able to assist to get an entire roof put on their house when they were in need. More recently, this calendar year, we had a local veteran who was in need that had not had heat and hot water for over eleven months, and we were able to provide assistance with getting those returned to him so that he can have heat and hot water throughout this coming winter. Community, we also provide grave markers and flags for any veteran that has passed away that the family requests from us. We've assisted with placing flagpoles in front of different city halls throughout the county. We have assisted with funds and manpower to provide playgrounds for children, as well as litter removal and pickup throughout the hashtag still serving national Vietnam efforts. Tonight, I'm here very specifically because I would like to present something to the fire department for the community, because we not only serve the city of Torrington, but we also go out and throughout the region, and I feel it's a vital piece of equipment. I know that one of our lieutenants, Joe DeCody, was vital into bringing this piece of equipment into the city probably about three or four years ago now. And I know that the administration has been seeking funds throughout the budgetary cycles to get it for us. However, with two of our officers, Assistant Chief Shopey of the Training Division and Battalion Chief Sterling being members of our post, and myself being an officer at the post, our post had brought it to a motion and voted that this evening, the Veterans of Foreign Wars Post two ninety-six will be presenting the City of Torrington's fire department with a piece of RIT equipment. RIT is Rapid Intervention Team. This is about one of the newest technologies on the market to help us save our own. There is nothing higher for us to do, being as I was one of the officers tasked with RIT at Wall Street. It was sitting in my truck and brought near and dear to me on how important this can be with the limited amount of manpower that we have. The national standard is very high for firefighters on scene to get one or two members out. This device here reduces that time drastically. But more importantly, our post voted, and we purchased the flotation devices and extra equipment that comes with this, so that the membership can also use this to safeguard the citizens of our community with using it in our water rescues as well. So Chief, this is a new piece of equipment that we purposely purchased yellow because engine two is our mutual aid piece, so that it can be used throughout the region with our responses, mutual aid throughout the area, as well as, like I said, it has the flotation devices and all that. So we'll be bringing it out to the north end and hopefully getting it in service here shortly after some training with the department. Gentlemen.
On with the internal lights on it. Both the rest of the lines.
Thank you very much. And I never want to miss an opportunity to express our gratitude to all of the men and women that serve our country and veterans who return to our communities and continue to serve our communities after that service. So thank you very much. We appreciate that. Okay, we're going to jump into the regular agenda. Is that it, Chief? Okay. All right, item number one, I'll entertain a motion to open the meeting to the public.
Oh, moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Benedetto.
Second.
And second, Commissioner McElroy. Any questions? Excuse me, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're open to the public. Anyone from the public wishing to address the board at this time? Seeing none, we're going to move into item two. I'll entertain a motion to accept the regular meeting minutes from June fifth, twenty twenty-four.
Oh, moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Benedetto, seconded by Commissioner McLeod. Questions or comments on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
All right, for the record, I hear one abstention, that goes to Commissioner Cogswell. Item three, I'll entertain a motion on the recommendation of the Board of Public Safety Policy Subcommittee to vote to approve the Torrington Fire Department Administrative Policy Number three zero six point one. This is an emergency medical response. This was previously approved by the Board of Public Safety Policy Subcommittee on July thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
It's all moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Cogswell, seconded by Commissioner McLeod. And the floor is open. I'll turn it over to the chairman of the policy committee.
Thank you, Mary. I'll start off. The committee had a couple of meetings with this. I would like to thank Fire Chief Borden and also Jeremy Menard, who is the head of the union as well, for input from the union. As we know, over the years and starting back a long time ago, the fire department responded to certain EMS calls and over the years has kind of gone up a little bit more in terms of what they're doing for service for medical care. A lot of these are, you know, in terms of serious calls where they could provide some intervention and assistance to citizens before they are transported by EMS to the hospital. There is administrative policy that was included in the packet three oh six point one, which is submitted by the chief along with a supplement with calls. You know, a few of the things that, you know, I know there was a discussion in the June meeting. I apologize for not being here in person, you know. But from my impressions at looking at this and from what we're doing, both with the input from the chief and the union, yes, there has been some expanded calls there. This is not something that's a perfect science in the way. They're trying to find ways that they can have an impact on calls. They're not going to every single one. They're not. You know, I know there are a lot of departments in the state that are responding to every single call that comes in that's an EMS. That is not the case. You know, there has been some talk about also in terms of, I think, misconceptions. And, you know, looking at it, though, at least in my view and through looking at it, I believe that, you know, the expansion and the ones they're doing, they make sense. There's a few that you look at them, and I know they've already removed some that did not make sense. But, you know, this is a starting point. The subcommittee, when they talked about it, you know, obviously, we have a partner with Trinity. We have dispatch through L C D. There are some things through dispatch that are not perfect. So sometimes calls are going to, I know there's questions why they're doing it. And a lot of times, it's how it's described by a caller, how it's dispatched. These are things we're going to continue to look at. The committee wants to, at least on an every quarter or biannual basis, continue to look at this. So this is not something that we're saying to accept this evening, and that would be the end of the conversation. But at the end of the day, I know that as the subcommittee was formed, this was one of the things they wanted us to look at. So my point being is that the conversation will continue. We'll make sure the calls that they're going to are appropriate. But I think this is a formal understanding with the calls for EMS that they are going to be a part of. And I don't know if there's anything from either the chief or also if there's any questions for union. I know, thank you again for Jeremy for being here. But once again, that was, this is what's in front of us. We'll continue to look at it. If there's adjustments as needed, subcommittee will come back to this board and we'll have those discussions. And I think that's the most important thing to understand, that this is always going to be an evolving process, as is EMS policy in the city. So with that, if there's any other comments or questions, but that's a brief summary of our deliberations on the subcommittee level.
I just have a couple of comments. In your discussion, the policy committee, the chiefs in the policy committee, did we involve Trinity in these talks?
Trinity was not there. At the end of the day, this is something from a city view. I understand that, you know, Trinity is our EMS responder. But this is, you know, ultimately a city policy. But to answer your question directly, no, this was something from the fire department. And it was from that view that we were speaking with the chiefs and with the people who are a part of the subcommittee. And also, I think, which was really important, is also having that union input as well. And so this is how we're going to approach it. I think they work very well together. I understand everything's not perfect. I know there's been discussions about showing up at calls and then being released quickly, you know. But, long story short, no.
One thing that we did do, though, is take into consideration all the times Jeff's here explaining Trinity's part in the medical response and what his recommendations have been. So it wasn't like they weren't involved. He just happened to not be there at that time, but.
I just wanted to comment that I had a lot of questions. And I thank the chief and President Lieutenant Menard for their input. And I still have questions, but I believe going forward this way is the best way to go, as long as we can keep revisiting it over periods of time and adjust it accordingly. I just, I hope somebody can laugh at this. I had too much time on my hands today, and I was looking at the calls coming in, and one of them that came in was not coded on anything that we had here at all. And I don't think it was serious in any which way. I just got a kind of a, kind of laughed about it like, okay, what's this one now? You know, so, but as of right now, I'm good and I support this policy.
I'd support, I'd like to make comment. I do support the policy committee and the union for getting involved in the fire department. But I really think that we should include Trinity in what calls should be and what shouldn't be responded to.
Well, I think when we've talked to Jeff many times before, he's been explaining to us how they get prioritized and how they get bumped to us or if they're tied up or not tied up. Like I said, when we were in there doing the meetings, we took it very serious. We asked lots of questions. Commissioners had an awful lot of questions. And we talked to the chief and the union a bunch of times on their aspect and the amount of calls. And we also talked about Jeff's comments over the last few months of what they provide and how it works. So our conclusion basically came down to, we're going to review this again down the road, but we're going to let them continue to do their job the way that they see fit based on the priority calls that are coming into dispatch.
I would add just one more thing, that we all know there's a larger conversation that's going to have to happen sooner rather than later about EMS in the city. And that's Trinity certainly a part of that. There's a contract part of that, so I'm not going to go into. But we all know that this is coming down the pipeline of we're going to have to review this. Things are changing in the city when it comes to EMS. But I think overall, you know, there's, Trinity is certainly going to be part of conversations on a larger scale, what does it look like for EMS service through Trinity as our partner and also through the fire department? So yes, I can understand what you're saying, but I also would think that there are going to be ample conversations going forward without going in too much detail from a contract standpoint.
So will this cut down on mutual aid?
Yeah, so, I mean, again, I think when we respond and we are short, you know, we sometimes have a paramedic fly car on the scene. What really we need is a transport unit. So I don't, I don't know if it will really so much as played as far as the fact that, you know, they're not able to transport, but. So I guess that answers your question.
Further questions or discussion? All right, so the motion was made by Commissioner Cogswell, seconded by Commissioner McLeod. I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
So the record, the motion passes by a majority. Thank you. And it's nice to see some of this policy work actually coming in advance. So thank you to the policy committee.
More coming.
Yeah, I hope so. I look forward to it. All right, item number four, I'll entertain a motion to authorize a mayor to act on behalf of the city to award execute and administer a contract agreement for unlimited car washing, which includes twice yearly detailing services to Torrington Car Care D B A Platinum Car Wash for two hundred and fifty dollars per vehicle pending city council approval. Excuse me, city council has approved this at its meeting on Monday, August fifth. Funding for the services will be multiple, is itemized in multiple department budget line items as further explained in the purchasing agent's letter dated July twenty-one, twenty twenty-four. Do I have that motion?
It's all moved.
Thank you. Commissioner Benedetto, seconded by Commissioner Cogswell. Questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call this motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item five, I'll entertain a motion to award the purchase of additional two Recor video detection camera systems to Utility Communications, Inc. of Hamden, Connecticut, in the amount of forty-three thousand, three hundred and fifty-four dollars pending city council, excuse me, this again, having been approved by the city council on August fifth. This purchase will be funded from the new equipment account as further explained in the purchasing agent's letter dated August first, twenty twenty-four.
All moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Benedetto, seconded by Commissioner Young. Are there questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item six, I'll entertain a motion to accept Police Chief Baldwin's reports from May and June, twenty twenty-four.
All moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Cogswell, seconded by Commissioner McElroy. Questions or comments on the report? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, I'll entertain a motion to accept Fire Chief Borden's reports from May and June of twenty twenty-four.
All moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Benedetto, seconded by Commissioner McLeod. Questions or comments on the report? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item eight, I'll entertain a motion to accept the EMS provider activity reports from May and June, twenty twenty-four.
All moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Benedetto.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner McElroy. Questions or comments on this report? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item nine, I'll entertain a motion to consider business by the Board of Public Safety Policy Subcommittee.
Mayor, I'd motion to the table. We will have additional business, but nothing this evening.
Okay, so I have a motion to table. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so a motion made by Commissioner Cogswell, seconded by Commissioner McElroy. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're tabled. Item ten, I'll entertain a motion to consider business by the volunteer fire departments.
All moved.
Thank you, Commissioner McLeod, seconded by Commissioner Benedetto. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? He's already standing up. Hi, Tom.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, members of the Board of Public Safety, and good evening, chiefs. So for the month of May and June, we had a cumulative total of one hundred eighty-six training hours between our members. We responded to twenty-one calls for service. We made twenty of those, so pretty good dependability right there. And we also wrapped up our fiscal year slash calendar year as far as tracking purposes and appointments. So I am now officially chief of Drakeville Volunteer Fire Department, and I have two lieutenants, John Mavor and Lieutenant Chris Bayes as well, wish they were here, but other business. So on top of that, I also wanted to take the opportunity to thank this board, chiefs, everybody standing behind me for the wonderful relationship that we've had over the last year. We've really excelled, I think, in terms of working together, both with Torrington and our mutual aid partners, as, you know, has been reflected through the various reports here. And we look forward to, you know, working together in the future again.
Thank you. Any questions for Chief Kalanowski?
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you. I will also add, too, I did reflect it in my report. We are now at twelve total firefighters, nine of which are interior, which is the highest level that I've seen in my time, probably in close to a decade. So, you know, we're ready to step up and provide a high level of service over the coming year through, to all of you and to all of our mutual aid partners as well. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you. Anything from Torrington this evening?
Thank you, Mayor Ford. I just, like since your last meeting, we've accepted a couple of more applications. Things have been pretty quiet as far as recruitment. Not really a whole lot going on with that, unfortunately. And just want to report that our car show is Friday night, maybe. If not, it'll be the following Friday night. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Potter. Any questions? All right, we'll move into item eleven. I'll entertain a motion to consider business by department heads.
All moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Benedetto.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner McLeod. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So first to Chief Baldwin this evening.
Evening commissioners. Since our last meeting, we hired four officers or went into the academy and one left the academy after a couple of days. So we currently have three officers in the academy. We also received a lateral transfer from Bloomfield. She is now on her own. She completed her abridged F T O program. She's doing extremely well. She was a great grab for our agency. Officer Deloy has retired. He submitted his retirement papers and is retired after twenty years.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five years. Officer Rubino, we lost Officer Rubino to the Middletown P D more because of his geographics. He lives in Cromwell, and Middletown is right next door. So it was just a matter of an easier commute for him. We did attend the unfortunate passing of our former police chief, Roger Genell. Passed away late last week. We had the wake and the funeral yesterday for him. Family was very appreciative of the efforts of the department and the city for honoring him in such a way for his service for our, not only our city, but as a military veteran as well. Last night, we had a national night out. I want to thank Commissioner Benedetto, Commissioner McElroy, Commissioner Young, and other people who attended that event. We visited five neighborhoods, and it was very well received by the people in the neighborhoods. And next year, we're going to do something a little bit different. Myself and deputy chief are working on a different plan as to how we're going to do the national night out next year. But it was very well received by people. And finally, Alice training, I have, my two S R Os are conducting Alice training with members of the Board of Teachers within the public school system right now. They had a one session today. They'll be doing a second session tomorrow at the Southwest School. School, it's hard to believe that we're talking about schools starting in a couple of weeks already. But we're preparing. We've been, I've been working with Superintendent Wilson concerning this and specifically Southwest School Principal Mary Ann Buchanan, who has pushed this movement forward. So we're going to try and get as many teachers within our school system, Alice certified, to deal with those unfortunate, the potential for an unfortunate situation that may occur in our school that we hope never does. From the emergency managers, from the emergency management perspective, we are monitoring the potential flooding as a result of the rain. I'm sorry, Mr. Potter, but I think you may have to cancel your car show. The forecast is showing that the hurricane or the tropical storm or depression is moving further west. So we're looking, we're anticipating about two inches, one and a half to two inches of rain compared to what earlier this week indicated that we were going to get up to maybe potentially seven inches of rain. So it looks like we're dodging a bullet in that regard. And that's all I have. Deputy?
Thank you, chief. Any questions from the board? Deputy Chief, anything this evening?
Because of the rain, the Cops and Kids Event tomorrow was canceled. We're going to try to do it again on the fifteenth, so following Thursday. That's it. One other thing, we had privilege of touring the new school, going through everything. A bunch of, the chief and I and command staff walked through, got a tour as it's going through. It's big and, but it's nice.
It is big. Commissioner, excuse me, Chief Borden, anything this evening?
Good evening. Just a few things. As you all know, we had a pretty significant incident on Wall Street a few weeks ago. And I just want to express my gratitude to the membership of the department for the work that they did, showing up with eleven people on scene to, a lot of fire condition. And things were really chopped up, and the fire was pretty buried inside that building. With that said, time of year again, where people are on vacation, so getting callbacks for personnel was a struggle for us. So again, as we continue to keep responding to the calls of that significance with minimum, well below minimum standards, it's very difficult. We had to rely on mutual aid to a significant extent. And even that was kind of limited as to what we were able to get for resources, et cetera. So hats off to all the people that were there at the fire and did an excellent job of saving the building and making sure all the occupants were safe. With that said, I'd also like to extend a, some gratitude to Stella's Pizza for providing pizzas to all the people that were working at that fire. Shows the community support that we have and really just a nice thing for them to do for us. Lastly, is, I just wanted to announce to the board, we promoted Lieutenant Brown just over six months ago, and he's now completed his probation. So he's going to go to full status as lieutenant. So congratulations to Lieutenant Brown. That's it.
Thank you, chief. Any questions?
Chief, I have just a couple of simple questions. The refractor? The refractor?
Extractor.
Whatever. Washing machine.
So, yeah, we're moving forward with that. It's now tied up. We thought it would be a smoother process being able to use a state bid thing, but purchasing decided they wanted to have other layers to that. So it's out for an R F P right now, and we're waiting to get the results of that so we can actually go out and make the purchase with whatever vendor comes in with the best price on that. So that should be wrapping up, I believe.
Well, I'm hoping you'll have it in front of you for the next meeting.
Okay. The other question I have is, you're having the same problems as the police department. It seems every, all of our last classes of recruits, one or more has dropped out either at the, you know, at the academy or once they started their job. Is there any particular reason or is it a pattern? is it a pattern or, you know? And are we getting reimbursed accordingly from any of those?
Well, to put things into magnitude, obviously, we're smaller in number than the PD, but when you look at us comparatively, statistically, we're about the same as, you know, we take people in and, you know, occasionally we lose one or two members here and there. There's a lot of different factors that it's hard to say exactly what it is, but, you know, obviously pension, healthcare, things like that. Those are things that individuals are looking for for their own personal reasons. And then, you know, recently, we just had a member who gave his letter of resignation, but that was to follow his passion and to build his business. So there's a lot of different reasons, but when you look at people going to other departments and things like that, it's what other departments might be offering out there and seeing a trend in the fire service right now where, I don't want to call it poaching, but a lot of departments are advertising saying, hey, if you're already certified, come to us, you know, we're going to make it worth your while. So that's a difficult thing to get, you know, get through, but it's hard to, you know, just throw a dart and say it's going to be this one reason. As far as the reimbursement side of it, when they do not meet their commitment, which is 36 months of service with us, yes, we go after them at a pro rited base. But again, trying to get it back, you know, you can only do so far. So I'll send a letter out, that kind of thing, and from there, it might get referred to corporate counsel and see, you know, if we're going to take this as small claims and it's worth it or not. But that, you know, again, goes beyond the department. Thank you. You're welcome.
Any other questions for Chief Borden? Deputy Chief Tripp, anything this evening?
Oh, yes, ma'am. I just have one thing. I'm still in shock. Senator Matthews, thank you very much. I've been talking with the union as a partnership into this fast forward for about six months now. The union's been raising money through donations, through community banks and everything and with the budget. So we're going as a team. So this is a total, I'm shaking because I'm so happy and so psyched that you actually presented this to the department. It means that much to me that you, you did that for us, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any questions for Deputy Chief? Anything from Trinity this evening, Jeff? All right, we'll move into item 12. I'll entertain a motion to consider business by mayor and members. Thank you, Commissioner Benedetto.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner McLeod. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And I'll start from my left with Commissioner McLeod.
I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Coxwell.
Just want to echo what Deputy Tripp was saying. Thank you very much. It's one of the better highlights that I've been on this board, seeing something like that and just to care for the department and seeing the community step up. It's a big, big donation, and thank you very much for that. And just second condolences to Chief Genell's family. Very sorry to hear about his passing and just extend condolences. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Benedetto.
Yeah, I would like to thank Lieutenant Matthews in that department for what they do. Thank you.
Commissioner McElroy?
Like to thank the Torrington firefighters for a great job on Wall Street and all the other things that they do day to day. Lieutenant Matthews, really appreciate that. You always step up. Thank you to the Torrance Police Department for coming out last night and showing great support to the community. And congratulations to the new deputy fire marshal.
Thank you, Commissioner Young.
Yeah, I just had a quick question or more like a comment for the policy subcommittee. I would hope to urge them to start with the goals and the objectives for kind of rating our chief and our fire chief and the co-chief, because I think that's important. Because I know the budget season is kind of the new, new cycle is starting, the new fiscal year is starting. So I think it's important to kind of move forward with a new, kind of new policy to kind of have the chiefs and the deputy chiefs kind of have a goals and objectives.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right, there being no further business before the board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Benedetto, seconded by Commissioner McElroy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned.